Hammond City Council, agenda public hearing. Roll call.
Johnny Blunt?
Here.
Jason Hood?
Here.
Bobby Martin?
Here.
Lamar Marshall?
Here.
Mike Williams?
Here. Okay. Seeing no public hearing is scheduled, we will now go into regular session. Roll call.
Johnny Blunt?
Here.
Jason Hood?
Here.
Bobby Martin?
Here.
Lamar Marshall?
Here.
Mike Williams?
Here.
All right. Pass the cross. Would you lead us in prayer, please? Amen.
Every eye close. Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for all things. Father God, we ask you to let this meeting be of you, heavenly Father. And Father God, we just thank you for everything that you have done for us throughout our lives. And in Jesus' name we pray, amen and amen.
And Mr. Dianne, would you lead us in prayer allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, in the physical, the spirit, and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. President, I do have one announcement.
This Saturday, November the 8th, from 10 until 2, actually from 9 o'clock, the Louisiana Healthy Communities Coalition, I gave you guys a copy of, I only have a few copies, I don't know if Cheryl has any more, but the Louisiana Healthy Communities Coalition will be sponsoring our first Healthy Fest, tobacco-free event. It's going to be held at the Hammond, the City of Hammond Rec Center. From 9 until 10, we're going to have a walk, a diabetes walk, that's going to be sponsored by one of our local health facilities in Hammond. It's the Tangi 100 Walk to Fight Diabetes. And then from 10 to 2, we're going to have the Healthy Fest. It's going to be a great event. We're asking you guys as councilmen to really spread the word with your constituents and if you have a chance to talk to people. And also we'd like for you guys to attend. It should be a great event. You can see on the fly what we're going to be doing, lots of free screenings. We're going to also have some showcase activities for the kids. We're also going to be, and the good thing is the showers, which they're a national recording artist gospel group. They're going to be performing from 12 until, from 11:30 to 12:30.
Eleven to twelve.
Oh, it's eleven to twelve.
Eleven to twelve.
Eleven to twelve. But just in case you guys don't know, the Louisiana Healthy Communities Coalition is a coalition made up of stakeholders in St. Tammany, Livingston, Tangier Hall, Washington, and San Alina parishes. It's a five parish group. We make up Region Nine in the state. And Cheryl is the assistant director and then Charity Gay is the director. And the whole purpose of the coalition is to promote healthy living in the five parish area. Hammond is the biggest part of the concentration. We, I think we have the most participation statewide in many of the events. And so we're trying to make this an annual event. This is our first attempt at trying to see how it goes. And we hope to get lots of people out to be a part of the Healthy Fest on November the 8th, Saturday.
Any reports? Mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple of things. Want to commend again the Keep Hammond Beautiful Committee for a very good cleanup. We had 106 volunteer hours and a total of 157 bags of trash that were picked up. So Vic, thank you again and thank your committee.
My pleasure.
We did get a sales tax report today. The sales tax collected that were actually for sales in the month of September was $1,435,611. This was down approximately 5% from the previous year. This brings our budget balance to negative $203,000. Again, just like last year, we're not overly concerned about that. We did increase the budget to a billion and a half per month. We should have some good months beginning now, moving forward. That is my report, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Approval of minutes.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Resolutions, none, all business, none, new business. A resolution to approve Two Brothers Plaza located at 900 Magazine Street for 2014 and 2015, high-low alcohol class A package and on premises, 60/40 ratio food to alcohol sale. The owner is Wanda Tillis. Jenny Wilson?
Good afternoon. Yes, we are coming to you tonight to ask that the Tillises, Ms. Tillis, Wanda Tillis, owner of Two Brothers Plaza, be able to sell high and low alcohol in their restaurant. They do have to meet these special conditions of the 60/40, and the zoning was previously approved with special conditions. She has applied and everything seems to be in order. We ask for approval and Ms. Tillis is here tonight if you have some questions or anything.
Yes.
Ms. Tillis, will you please come up?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Ms. Tillis. Ms. Tillis, it is customary that we share with you the importance of making sure that you're monitoring no liquor sales to minors. And if you do, then that's going to put you in our doghouse.
I understand.
Okay.
We always expire duty.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions? Pass it to Ruth.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, a resolution to approve Nolly Barley Brewing located at 1709 Carbon Road for 2014 and 2015, high-low alcohol class A package and on premises sales with conditions and limited to the beer product they produce. The owner is Nolly Barley Brewing LLC.
We're coming tonight to ask that they be approved for high-low sales of alcohol on premise and packaged. This will allow them to do their tours and charge for the tastings as well as sell in their gift shop packaged. There are conditions that they are chained to, so to speak, that was previously approved in the zoning. I can read each one if you'd like. It is, they are listed 1 through 8 underneath the resolution. But everything seems to be in order with their application. And since the approval of the zoning was approved, we ask that this be approved tonight.
I do have one question. The only question I have is the sale of alcohol is only, I know it's for consumption, but it's only for consumption based on?
Their brewing, what they brew.
I understand that. But I just want to get a clarification, the last time I was saying a similar question. So it's really designed for taste testing? So in other words, if we, let me ask the question this way. If we approve this, does that allow the location to, let's say, a person to come there and drink as much beer as they want to drink? Or is it really truly designed for, to be able to consume beer for the purpose of a tour and not to sit there and consume a six-pack of beer? And that's, that's an important question.
It's designed, it's designed for the brewing, the tasting, and there's possibility in the future that there could be like a tasting tap room where you sit and taste that doesn't go on for hours at a time and it's only during their, their hours of operation. It wouldn't be like a bar 2:00 a.m., it would be during tours.
So my question would be is to make sure, and I'm for the tasting concept because I understand the need to have that.
Right.
But does the language specifically state that it's designed, because tasting, if you define the word tasting, tasting is not like drinking for the consumption, you know, like you would drink a?
Right.
Tasting is, you know, designed.
Tasting, for tasting. I understand. Well, they are, they are conditions as to how this can be sold. Like I said, there's 1 through 8, and they can only sell what they brew. Some of that can be high beer. I'm going to call up Carrie and her husband, Zach, to elaborate maybe a little bit more on that tasting for you and let you know exactly what they have in mind.
I guess more importantly, Jenny, to me, is not their elaboration, and I'm, like I said, I'm for the tasting, is to define the definition because once we approve it, then we're defined by what we approve. So I can't read it in here because, you know, but I really want to know if the language specifically states the definition of what tasting is all about.
The state specifically requires that we sell no more or serve no more than 10% of our total production inside the brewery for tastings in tasting rooms. So we're limited by the state to 10% of what we produce in the brewery.
And that is included?
As total sales.
10% of total sales, correct.
That's for the amount that you, but that doesn't talk about how much could be consumed during an event.
Well, we have our responsible vendor's permit and you're not supposed to, you know, serve anybody over a certain amount. Like, you know, you can't serve someone who is intoxicated and, you know, you have to, we have to follow all those rules as well, just because we are on our tastings right now, giving out samples, and so we have to follow those same rules, just, you know, for that.
But there isn't anything specifically that states that we have to limit a certain number of actual samples. That's left up to us, the state has pretty much left it up to the minors.
So a person that tastes like a gallon with a beer, they want it.
But we wouldn't allow it because that, obviously, a gallon of beer would make you intoxicated. So we don't want that on us. So, yeah, we would follow our responsible vendors under that.
I mean, to make it clear, that's not the intentions.
I mean, I'm also not the intention, I understand that, I understand. I'm just asking for the sake of defining what the word tasting really means. I don't want to belathe the discussion, but that, that can become finish if we think through that. So how do we prevent that from, you know, rules are designed to keep honest people honest, you know? So how do we, how do we, how do we make sure that that's, the intent is what we actually have in the language? Why don't you ask our dear review on, any feedback on that?
No, so that is in the language and that's no different than any other provider of alcoholic beverages or someone who sells alcoholic beverages. They have a duty and responsibility. Of course, in this case, they're limited because it's their profit at some point. The packaged liquor is only, can only be consumed on premises.
Right, I understand that.
So we're just talking about what is available for tasting and they control that.
And the revenue, you know, created through this is going to be minuscule to what we do as a manufacturer, so we're always going to be a manufacturer first. So jeopardizing that manufacturing capability would be silly on our part.
Well, while you're still there, just want to remind you as well the importance of making sure we don't have any minors coming in to get tasted, okay?
Definitely.
Because we definitely will be doing a trial run and make sure that you stand weep.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any questions? Please come forward and give your name.
I just had a question.
Is that have your name?
Joseph Cross. Pastor Joseph Cross.
Your address, please.
109 Short Street. I have a church that's less than 1,000 feet. So I don't know if any letters was passed out, not just listening to it. My church is right around the corner from where you're supposedly be having this. And then there's a church right, and I have a brotherhood that has a church right in your front door. So I don't know if, I thought normally when you do something like this, you get a letter in the mail by me being a pastor.
Really? Is it?
I didn't receive none. And I'm pretty sure my brotherhood church that's right across didn't receive none because he would have members here.
He, he did, they did.
They did?
And we received a letter. Now, Pastor Cross, I did want to, we did do some research on that, and actually the definition of 1,000 feet is the way that you would normally walk along a sidewalk. So I think from Short Street, it may not be 1,000.
May not be 1,000?
Because it's 1,000 feet certainly as the crow flies, but not as the sidewalk would normally.
Would normally, okay. And the next question I had is, you know, because of that neighborhood, and I guess that's your district one, the youth, it's not?
It's not your three and four.
Three and four? So the youth, that would be, what kind of scenario will the youth be drawing there? You know?
Well, I don't think that, really what it is, is the company sells beer, they bring in tours, they have tasting, maybe a sample of the beer so people can decide what they want to buy. And so my concept of it would be that a person would say, oh, I like that, I want to buy that, or I like that, I want to try that. So it's not, and that was my whole point.
Okay.
It's designed for tasting to decide what you want to purchase, you know, and that's what it's for, then that's different than coming there and, you know, watching a football game and drinking beer and that type of stuff.
Well, I just said that because there's, there's three churches in that community. Pastor Hannibal?
There's also a club in the community right now that sells, that sells.
Okay. Well, that was just my concern.
I'm just making a point, you know, to be fair affairs, there's actually a club in the corner of Coleman and, and Corbin and Moon.
Okay, well, that's, that's, that's all I had. Thank you.
Any further questions from the audience?
Making motion to approve? Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, a resolution to approve Carvana Mexican Restaurant located at 1603 North Morrison Boulevard, Hammond, Louisiana, for 2014 and 2015, high-low alcohol class A package and on premises, 60/40 ratio food to alcohol sales. The owner is Carlo Mendoza. Jenny?
Yes, sir. This is a new restaurant that's coming to town. It's, the location is the old Pizza Inn across from the Hood dealership. They have applied for alcohol to go with their food, so they are also obligated to a 60/40 ratio with a 60% food, 40% alcohol content. And they are, have put in an application and have met all the rules of the application. And they're also here tonight to come up and if you have any questions.
Carol.
Good evening.
Good evening, Carol. Carol, as we have spoken to the other two business owners, this also applies to La Cabana Mexican Restaurant in terms of making sure we do not sell any liquor to minors. There will be instances where, you know, it will be tested, make sure, okay?
Right, I understand that.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Are there any questions from the audience? Number four.
Making motion to approve? Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number four, a resolution to consider and take action with respect to adopting a resolution given preliminary approval to the issuance of sales tax refunding bonds of the City of Hammond, State of Louisiana. Make an application to the State Bond Commission for approval of said refunding bonds and providing for other matters in connection therewith. The Grant Schuster, Slaughter.
Thank you, Grant Schuster with Foley Udel Bond Counsel. The resolution you have before you is a preliminary only, preliminary approval resolution to start the process to hopefully refinance two of the outstanding sales tax bond issues, the Series 2005 and the Series 2006. The idea being that with adoption of this resolution, we'll be able to file with the State Bond Commission for the December 18th meeting, right after the first of the year, assuming the market holds somewhere where it is now, there'll be an attempt to refinance those bonds with no debt extension, reduce your payments each year, and free up sales tax monies to the city each year. Currently, projections are around 600,000 net in sales tax savings, a little over $100,000 per year. Given the fact that the market is such now that we can go to the State Bond Commission, this will permit us to get that two-month process basically behind us. If the market's right after the first of the year, we'll proceed. If it's not, we'll put it on the back shelf until it does, but there's no downside to the city to start the process. We also have John Pochet here with Raymond James, the underwriter for the bond issue. They'll be seeking to price the bonds after the first of the year.
Any questions from the audience? Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Final adoption of ordinance, all business, none, new business, introduction of ordinance and set of public hearing. Number one, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the sale of sales tax refunding bonds in one or more series of the City of Hammond, State of Louisiana, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Second.
Mr. Schuster?
Motion introduced. Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for November 18th, 2014.
Mr. President, we need to, I think Grant needs to talk about this, setting the public hearing and so forth. I don't think it'll be that quick.
Okay.
Now, we can go ahead if you like, we, and I think the indication was you do have a meeting November 18th, so that would be fine. Can I just mention the purpose for this ordinance? The purpose is, and we're doing this pretty much routine in the last few years with public bodies that are seeking to refinance their bonds, lower their payments, have savings to taxpayers and to the city. What we try to do is provide that if we meet a certain level of savings, then we can jump into the market, take advantage of that in between council meetings, and authorize the Director of Administration or the mayor to execute the bond purchase agreement. We have found over the years that we have lost some refinancing opportunities because the market was right at a certain point in time and we couldn't wait two, three, four weeks for a council meeting to confirm the sale. So that's the idea behind it. That's the ordinance that you have before you for an adoption.
Now, Grant, I thought when we discussed this, that the State Bond Commission had to approve it prior to the passage of the ordinance. Is that not correct?
No, the ordinance can be passed at any time because this, we simply can't actually sell the bonds until after the Bond Commission meets to approve the issuance. This is simply to permit at some point in the future for the execution of a bond purchase agreement if you have at least 3% present value savings to the city, which is the threshold the State Bond Commission sets in their guidelines, and it permits us to lock in interest rates if they're favorable prior to a council meeting. Otherwise, we'd have to look at the afternoon of a council meeting to price the bonds and the interest rates might not be favorable at that point in time.
Well, there's a lot of discussion about interest rates going up. What would be the earliest Bond Commission meeting that we could make?
We're going to file this for the December 18th, Bond Commission.
Okay.
And we've just found over the years that once these refinancings work, they may evaporate. So the thing to do is try to get in there as quickly as you can, get your approvals from the state regulatory agency as quickly as you can, and then be prepared. If the market's not there, we don't have to pull the trigger. If it is, at least we'll be able to and we'll have that option.
Very good. Thank you, Senator. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And you'll be back on the 18th?
We got the vote on it.
Next council meeting for the public hearing?
If you would like me to, I'd be happy to.
We need you.
Number two, introduction of an ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement for the acceptance of property from the State of Louisiana for road transfer credits and to provide for related matters.
Mr. President, I had sent out an explanation to the City Council and I could go into this in detail now, or I could wait until the public hearing. But in the last audit, it is indicated that, and this has been in every audit, that we do have some money that's due to the Department of Transportation and Development. Across the state, they have given a number of municipalities, or they have given all municipalities an opportunity to offset their obligations to the Department of Transportation and Development by offering certain transfer credits, whereas we would take over a road, first of all, let me say, they would fix the road and then we would take over the road. And as the councilman and I were discussing, this would be forever. So in the future, in the distant future, we would have some, some cost to the city, but through a lot of the initiatives that we have, we believe that it could be funded in a number of different ways. This would encompass two streets, and I'll go over all of the streets that we considered at the public hearing. One is Church Street Extension, and for Church Street Extension, they're willing to give us credits of $328,424. And then on Cherry Street, which is right here, which is also a state highway, they're willing to give us credits of $121,048 for a total of, I believe that's $449,000 and so change. So I would like the council, if they would, to introduce this so that we can discuss it in much more detail next time.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for November 18th, 2014.
Number three, introduction of an ordinance, create the Department and Civil Services Administration specialist position, pay grade 120, non-classified position to be funded through Fire Department Administration budget.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. President, what we want to do is combine two part-time positions. One is the Departmental Secretary in the Fire Department, and the other is the Civil Service Board Secretary. And we wanted to make that a full-time position.
So are you going to, are you going to eliminate two positions as well? Shouldn't that be a part of the ordinance as well?
Yeah, we are.
But you have to clarify that you're going to eliminate two positions as well?
Actually, it would only be the part-time Departmental Secretary because civil service is kind of on its own, we're just taking over that position.
We'd have to actually show elimination of one position as well. I mean, it's elimination and a, and a change.
Right.
So I imagine that we'd have to either get that amended in the ordinance or do that introduction, either one of the two.
However you all, sure, yeah, because it is, it is a part-time position in the budget.
You're correct, sir. And we will make that in the, in the ordinance itself.
Questions?
Motion to approve? Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for November 18th, 2014.
Mr. President, may I, may I request the council?
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for November 18th, 2014.
Mr. President, may I, may I request the council take up an item that's not on the agenda? And this has to do with the bid for a piece of property that the council has previously approved that we declare surplus. It's not on the agenda, but I would ask the council if they would to consider allowing that to be placed on the agenda at this time.
I make a motion to amend the agenda to add item one of resolutions to approve the accepted bid from Don't Cuss, Call Gus, LLC to sell the property, declared a surplus by ordinance for the bid amount of $33,800. That's a motion to amend.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved to amend.
Mr. Page. The.
You just amended it, now we need to take up the reservation place.
He's ready to go. He was going to campaign.
There was a bid we put out for some property on Conrad Anderson for sale and we did bid it out and we received a bill from Gus O'Keefe.
O'Creep.
O'Creep, thank you. And Councilman Hood, the correct name is Don't Fuss, Call Gus. But he did make the bid and the bid stated that we would not sell that property for less than a praise value. Praise value coming at $33,800. They bid $33,800 and they were the only bidder.
Since it's ladies president, I won't cuss.
Yes, sir.
And I won't fuss. How about making a motion?
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay. To adjourn.